Hello my friends, welcome to my channel. Welcome for this Joy of Breath work session. We do this weekly, every Tuesday. And now you can include one more day, every Friday also. You do this different breathing exercise, this deep breathing exercise, energized breathing, breathing meditation, in order to balance our mind and body, to activate the vagus nerve, the nerve that is responsible for who come from the brain to the gut and from the gut to the brain, who is responsible for our interaction, for our digestion, also how you sleep, how you relax. It's part of our sympathetic nervous system. As you know, you have two sympathetic nervous system. One is sympathetic when it's the fight and flight or freeze, when you are in danger, it's activate. Unfortunately, most of the people operate with this system. And you want to start to operate a little bit more with rest and digest system, which is more relaxation, more relaxing activity, more meditation, more breathing, so that you can feel more balanced, more grounded, manage the stress in a better way. And of course, achieve a better sleep and better energy. As you know, I'm a sleep expert, a menopause coach, and I teach people how to achieve a really deep restful sleep and get more energy. So today we're gonna start a little bit more, invigorate, energize breathing. Then you're gonna alternate with box breathing, equal breathing, or anu vam vam in Sanskrit, in yogic word. And then also you're gonna start this deep, the pragmatic yogic breath, and then you're gonna do a short meditation. So let's begin, make you sure you're comfortable, the foundation of, it's very important that your spine is straight, or if you lay down, you just feel the grounding, feel the heaviness of the body, the spine need to be straight, relax, your shoulders relax, your face relax, your abdomen relax, everything relax. You're gonna start just, if you're laying down or sitting down, just close the eyes and begin to observe the breath, begin to observe the breath. And what I willingly want, my focus in this session, is that you start to visualize what's happening inside the body. So be more internal, connect more with the body, and visualize eventually what's happening in the body, so that you can really emphasize and amplify actually the effect of the deep breathing. So notice how you feel right now, notice sensation, notice the quality of the breath, the quantity of the breath, and maybe where you sense the breath, maybe when you breathe through the nose or through the mouth, or maybe in the chest, on the belly, the pelvic floor even, or even in the spine. You can sense the breath. When you take this deep breath, you can expand and actually you feel how the belly go a little bit more towards your spine and you feel the breathing also with the spine. So let's take a five slow breath without manipulating, without controlling, just to tune inside the body, to connect with the body. And you can even side out and release any negative thoughts, any negative tension that may arrive, that may have inside the body, that stack the energy in the body, actually create the illness. So you want to unblock all the channels inside the body, you want to circulate in a better way our energy. So for that reason, this call also pranayama or extend energy. And you start to deepen the breath now, deepen the breath. You can take two, three more deep breaths. From the pelvic floor, engage the pelvic floor, belly expand over the chest and hold a little bit. And then release, exhale through the nose. I'm gonna breathe all the time through the nose, that's essential. And from time to time, I'm gonna invite you to open the mouth and just release and make this relaxation a little bit deeper. Again, two, three more deep inhale. Aungit and expand and hold the breath. And slowly exhale through the nose. Inhale full. Expand and hold. Exhale slow. This hold between inhalation and exhalation, in the yogic word, it's known as kumbhaka. It's where the magic happen actually, when you start to hold the breath a little bit longer. So again, inhale full with the belly and expand the chest and then hold. And then exhale slow. Inhale full. Hold. Exhale. Inhale full. Hold. Exhale. And now you start inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Little bit more rhythmic, little bit more fast. Inhale. Exhale. You're gonna do that 12 times. Inhale. Exhale. 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 In. Out. In. Out. In. Out. In. Out. Last one, in. Out. And then slow down, we're gonna do equal breathing, box breathing. Inhale to five, inhale, two, three, four, five, hold. Two, three, four, five, exhale, two, three, four, five, hold. Two, three, four, five, in, two, three, four, five, hold. Exhale, two, three, four, five, hold. Inhale, two, three, four, five, hold. Two, three, four, five, exhale, two, three, four, five, hold. Two, three, four, five, inhale, two, three, four, five, hold. Exhale, two, three, four, five, hold. In, inhale, two, three, four, five, hold. Exhale, two, three, four, five, hold. Now engage the perineum, in, two, three, four, five, hold. Two, three, four, five, exhale, two. Exhale, release the perineum, two, three, four, five, inhale, two, three, four, five. Engage the pelvic floor, in, two, three, four, five, hold. Two, three, four, five, exhale, two, three, four, five. Release the pelvic floor and hold, two, three, four, five. In, engage the pelvic floor, two, three, four, five, hold. Two, three, four, five, release the pelvic floor, two, three, four, five, and hold. The breath, two, three, four, five. In, two, three, four, five. Pause, hold, two, three, four, five, exhale, two, three, four, five, and hold. Two, three, four, five, and now in your way, in. Hold. Out. Hold. In. Hold. Out. Hold. In. Hold. Out. Hold. And now again, little bit more rhythmic, little bit more fast. If you want to feel how that feel, you can always can put one hand on the belly or one on the chest. So let's begin, two, three, four, start. Inhale. Exhale. 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 Inhale. Hold. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. And now pause. Breathe normal. You're gonna start this box breathing again, inhale five, hold five, exhale five, hold five. Engage the perineum, two, in, two, three, four, five, hold. Two, three, four, five. Exhale, release the perineum, two, three, four, five, hold. Two, three, four, five. Inhale, engage the pelvic floor, two, three, four, five, hold. Two, three, four, five, release the pelvic floor, exhale, two, three, four, five, and hold. Two, three, four, five. Now in your own, in. Two, three, four, five, hold. Exhale, two, three, four, five, hold. And in. Hold. And out. And hold. And in. Hold. And out. And hold. And in. Pause. And out. Pause. And in. Hold. And out. And hold. And in. Hold. Out. Hold. 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 Now you're ready for the third round. Now we're gonna do 21 times forceful intensive breathing. Two, three, four, let's begin, in. Out. 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 Last one, in. Out. And now slow, just observe, breathe normal. Without manipulating, without controlling, be gentle, just slow down and just observe, be gentle, breathe normal. Do deep breathing, but slowly, and we're gonna exhale a little bit longer. Oh, inhale normal. A very slow, steady, long breath, exhale. In normal. A longer exhale. In normal. Pause. A very long exhale. As much as possible, aungit the exhalation. Inhale normal. Hold. And then slowly, very slow exhale. Inhale normal. A very long exhale. In. Hold. And out. And hold. And in normal. Hold. A very long exhale. In. Hold. Long exhale. In. Hold. And long exhale. In with the pelvic floor and belly exhale. Inhale, inhale to the top of the crown. Hold. And contract exhale longer, slow. In. Hold. And longer. In. Hold. A long exhale. You do one to two ratio, four inhale, six exhale, in. Hold. Exhale. 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 In. Hold. Long exhale. Two more, in. Hold. Long exhale. In. Or. Long exhale. Slow down the breath. And then you're gonna start scan body meditation, release, relax. Now just slow down as much possible the breath. Just focus on the body, focus on any organ that I can mention, focus on my voice. Focus on breathing, but very gentle, very gentle towards each part of the body. You're gonna relax each part one by one. Just feel the heaviness of the body, feel the cloth touching gently your skin. Notice the noise outside the room. Maybe clock somewhere, somewhere in the room, or some something outside the window, some birds or some noise from the street. And now focus your attention towards the noise inside the body. And notice the blood circulation, the heartbeat, the breathing. Just notice how you breathe. You're gonna again, make attention for this kind body final relaxation. You can state three times, I am statement, I'm healthy, I'm relaxed. I'm balanced or in peace, whatever you choose, repeat three times. And you feel body heavy and heavy. You're gonna start to relax from the toes to the top of the crown. Start with the right foot, as usual, right big toes, four toes, third toe, second toe, and pinky one. Relax all the toes one by one and breathe there. And begin to relax the sole or the foot and the top of the foot, right foot, relax. Three deep breath there. Relax your ankle. All the right foot relax. Feel the sensation, feel the muscles relax, the tissue relax, the cells relax. Relax the wall part of the leg, the calf muscle, breathe there. On top of the wall part of the leg, the bottom of the wall part of the leg relax, calf muscle relax. Right foot relax, right ankle relax, right wall part of the leg relax. Now begin to relax the right kneecap, the top of kneecap, the bottom of kneecap, breathe there. So now you relax from toes to the kneecap and then begin to bring awareness and relaxation towards the right hip. Three breath there. The top of the right hip, the bottom of right hip. Right thigh actually relax. And now you begin to relax the right hip. Feel the sensation of relaxation from the toes to the hip, all the right leg is relaxed. Now we begin to relax the left foot, the left leg. Begin with the left big toe, four toe, third toe, second toe and pinky one, all the toes relax now. The soles of the left foot relax, the top of the left foot relax, left ankle relax, breathe there. Your breath is slow, gentle, you focus now in the left ankle, breathe towards the left ankle. Imagine the relaxation in right toes, ankle. Now going to left calf muscle, left wall part of the left leg and top of the leg and bottom of the leg, all the left calf muscle relax, breathe there. Now begin to relax the left kneecap, the top of the kneecap, the bottom of the kneecap. You know, all the left wall part of the leg is relaxed from the toe to the kneecap. Slowly begin to relax the left thigh. Three breath. Then begin to relax the left hip. Slow breath, breath. So your left leg from the toes to the hip is relaxed, your right leg from toes to the hip is relaxed, both leg is relaxed. Now we begin to relax the right hand and right arm. So begin with the toes of the right arm, relax the thumb, the index, the middle, the ring and the pinky, all the fingers is relaxed now, the palm is relaxed, the bottom of the palm, the top of the palm, all the right hand relax, right wrist relax. Imagine the tissue relaxing, cells relaxing. Three breath. Relax the wall part of the right arm. Right elbow, relax. Breathe three times. Begin to relax the right upper arm, right biceps. Three breath. Relax the right shoulder. Again, three breath. Now the right arm from the shoulder to the fingers is relaxed. And only begin to relax the left hand and left arm. Left thumb, left index, right fingers, the rings and the pinky one. All the fingers relax, the palm relax, the bottom of the palm, the top of the palm, left wrist, left wall part of the left arm relax. Bottom of the left arm, the top of the left arm. Three breath. Relax the left elbow. Left. Upper part of the, upper part of the arm, left biceps, relax now. Three breath towards the left upper arm of, left arm, relax, breathe three times. Relax the left shoulder. Three breath. Now begin to relax all the arm, left arm is relaxed from the shoulder to the fingers. Right arm is relaxed from the shoulder and the fingers. Now begin to relax your lower back. Breathe there. Slowly bring attention and breath towards the middle part of the back. Relax, breathe. And slowly relax the upper part of the back, relax and breathe. All the spine is relaxed, all the backside of the toes is relaxed. All the spine is relaxed, all the backside of the torso is relaxed. Left side of the torso relax, right side of the torso relax. Relax the back of the neck. Again, left. Core girl, the light core girl, back of the neck, back of the head relax. Begin to relax the top of the head and forehead. And now focus in the middle of the forehead, your third eye and breathe there. Imagine golden white, 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 or maybe green, white. Penetrate from the forehead through the third eye all the way down to your face, your neck. Your chest, your back, your hips, your thigh, your legs. All the way down to your toes and going down on the earth. And take out all the stagnant and negative energy, all the, uh, stagnation. Any tension that you feel, it's going out now, you relax more and more. Your face is relaxed, your thumb touching gently the palate is relaxed, your nose relaxed. Your left eyebrow relaxed, right eyebrow, eyebrow relaxed. Left eye pocket relaxed, right eye pocket relaxed. Left eye relaxed, right eye relaxed. Your nose relaxed, your mouth relaxed. Your both cheek relaxed, your chin relaxed. Relax your front of the neck. And then begin to relax the right core bone, the right, left core bone, the upper chest relax. The left side of rib cage, the right side of rib cage, the middle part of the rib cage, the wall part of the rib cage. Begin to relax your abdomen and belly. Breathe there, gently, slowly. Your heart, your chest, everything relax. Your pelvic floor begin to relax. And again, this golden white or green white from the head to the toes. All, going through all the tissue, all the major organ healing, relaxing. Cleaning. Clean all the negativity. That may, maybe you accumulate unconsciously from around the world or consciously. You clean our energetic system, you clean our blood system, you clean our cardiovascular system with our breath. You clean our lungs, our. Our belly, everything gets clean, relax. Take away all the toxin. And then slowly begin to deepen the breath very slowly. From the pelvic floor and belly expand towards the chest and top of the crown. Slowly release. Very gently, very slowly. Connect with your higher self, with your true self, with your body, with your mind. With this breathing technique, breathing. Breath work. You can imagine inhale peace and exhale love. With every breath. And you begin more and more healthy, more and more relaxed, more and more balanced. Maintain this deep breath from the pelvic floor all the way to the top of the crown and all the way down. Again, exhale little bit longer. Be very gentle with the breath, imagine the breath as a wave coming and going, a cleansing. All your system, your brain. You begin more and more relaxed. Again, deep inhale with the pelvic floor all the way to the top of the crown. And slowly, long exhale. And notice what's happening inside the body, inside your mind, the brain. Slow inhale and long exhale. Very gentle inhale. And long exhale. You feel how the belly rise and fall, the chest rise and fall. You can repeat this three times, your I am affirmation, affirmation again. Maintain this deep inhale. Pause. A long exhale. And now you can very slowly bring awareness to your toes, your fingers. And make a micro movement with your toes, with the fingers, make a circles with your wrists, with your ankles. Begin aware of the body, of the movement of the body. Begin aware of the breath. You can now make your hands together, bring your hands together and make a hit. And then place it in your eyes, relax the eyes. Imagine the purple light penetrate through your eyes and relax the eyes. And then take a three deep inhale and exhale. Now slowly extend your arms above the head, begin, begin to wake up. Stretch all your body as you wake up in the morning, gently open the eyes. So you can squeeze all the muscles, squeeze, squeeze, squeeze and then release, relax, stretch as much as you can. Full breath in, a full breath out. Slowly micro movement of the hands with the, with the legs, extend the arms above the head, stretch. You can bend the knee and roll on one side, come slowly to sit in cross leg position. If you lay down on your bed, slowly come to your wake up. For final check in. Take a three more cleansing breath, you're gonna finish our session, uh, for today. Take a full breath in. Open the mouth, release. Again, full breathing. Open the mouth, uh, release. The last one, full breath in. Open the mouth, a release. Without we complete today's session, I hope you feel better, you feel more centered, more grounded. Give me feedback, comment below this video in my YouTube cha- channel, Balance Perimenopause and Menopause. I gonna upload also in my other, uh, channel, Deliana Yoga. So comment below this video, share the video. Uh, and engage and let me know how that session, if you did the session by yourself. Uh, how is the effect of this session or if you did a session with me? Please comment below the video, how you feel after the session, before you start the session and after you start the session. Share this video, I hope ma- many people can join me every week. And you can build a community, uh, with, uh, this breath work. Thank you so much to join me and stay healthy, be happy, I see you in the next week, next video, bye bye.